I guess I, well, see. We had one that we did in some way, it's pretty, it was like four hundred pounds pounds. They have to be like a slipper. I didn't know. I hadn't read that up. I don't have to do it with them. I was gonna say, like, you know. Well, I called them to him and I went to him and he was curious, what's his name? And I'm like, oh. Okay. We need to put it in the service, and he's in the, okay. It's like a chocolate, it's like, there is no chocolate cake in there. What is it? I can't do that. It's not. I would know. Hi. I think you're, you know, my, my.
Are you discovering it too? This is, I heard all our voting machines, used machines from California. Yeah. Eight hundred of them. They like to somebody tell me. They got me certified. They also make us, uh, uh, uh. I don't know. Are you discovering it too? This is, I heard all our voting machines, used machines from California. Yeah. Eight hundred of them. They like to somebody tell me. They got me certified. They also make us, uh, uh, uh. I don't know. Are you discovering it too? This is, I heard all our voting machines, used machines from California. Yeah. Eight hundred of them. They like to somebody tell me. They got me certified. They also make us, uh, uh, uh. I don't know. Are you discovering it too? This is, I heard all our voting machines, used machines from California. Yeah. Eight hundred of them. They like to somebody tell me. They got me certified. They also make us, uh, uh, uh. I don't know. Are you discovering it too? This is, I heard all our voting machines, used machines from California. Yeah. Eight hundred of them. They like to somebody tell me. They got me certified. They also make us, uh, uh, uh. I don't know. Are you discovering it too? This is, I heard all our voting machines, used machines from California. Yeah. Eight hundred of them. They like to somebody tell me. They got me certified. They also make us, uh, uh, uh. I don't know. Are you discovering it too? This is, I heard all our voting machines, used machines from California. Yeah. Eight hundred of them. They like to somebody tell me. They got me certified. They also make us, uh, uh, uh. I don't know. Are you discovering it too? This is, I heard all our voting machines, used machines from California. Yeah. Eight hundred of them. They like to somebody tell me. They got me certified. They also make us, uh, uh, uh. I don't know. Are you discovering it too? This is, I heard all our voting machines, used machines from California. Yeah. Eight hundred of them. They like to somebody tell me. They got me certified. They also make us, uh, uh, uh. I don't know. Are you discovering it too? This is, I heard all our voting machines, used machines from California. Yeah. Eight hundred of them. They like to somebody tell me. They got me certified. They also make us, uh, uh, uh. I don't know. Are you discovering it too? This is, I heard all our voting machines, used machines from California. Yeah. Eight hundred of them. They like to somebody tell me. They got me certified. They also make us, uh, uh, uh. I don't know. Are you discovering it too? This is, I heard all our voting machines, used machines from California. Yeah. Eight hundred of them. They like to somebody tell me. They got me certified. They also make us, uh, uh, uh. I don't know. Are you discovering it too? This is, I heard all our voting machines, used machines from California. Yeah. Eight hundred of them. They like to somebody tell me. They got me certified. They also make us, uh, uh, uh. I don't know. Are you discovering it too? This is, I heard all our voting machines, used machines from California. Yeah. Eight hundred of them. They like to somebody tell me. They got me certified. They also make us, uh, uh, uh. I don't know. Are you discovering it too? This is, I heard all our voting machines, used machines from California. Yeah. Eight hundred of them. They like to somebody tell me. They got me certified. They also make us, uh, uh, uh. I don't know. Are you discovering it too? This is, I heard all our voting machines, used machines from California. Yeah. Eight hundred of them. They like to somebody tell me. They got me certified. They also make us, uh, uh, uh. I don't know. Are you discovering it too? This is, I heard all our voting machines, used machines from California. Yeah. Eight hundred of them. They like to somebody tell me. They got me certified. They also make us, uh, uh, uh. I don't know. Are you discovering it too? This is, I heard all our voting machines, used machines from California. Yeah. Eight hundred of them. They like to somebody tell me. They got me certified. They also make us, uh, uh, uh. I don't know. Are you discovering it too? This is, I heard all our voting machines, used machines from California. Yeah. Eight hundred of them. They like to somebody tell me. They got me certified. They also make us, uh, uh, uh. I don't know. Are you discovering it too? This is, I heard all our voting machines, used machines from California. Yeah. Eight hundred of them. They like to somebody tell me. They got me certified. They also make us, uh, uh, uh. I don't know. Are you discovering it too? This is, I heard all our voting machines, used machines from California. Yeah. Eight hundred of them. They like to somebody tell me. They got me certified. They also make us, uh, uh, uh. I don't know. Are you discovering it too? This is, I heard all our voting machines, used machines from California. Yeah. Eight hundred of them. They like to somebody tell me. They got me certified. They also make us, uh, uh, uh. I don't know. Are you discovering it too? This is, I heard all our voting machines, used machines from California. Yeah. Eight hundred of them. They like to somebody tell me. They got me certified. They also make us, uh, uh, uh. I don't know. Are you discovering it too? This is, I heard all our voting machines, used machines from California. Yeah. Eight hundred of them. They like to somebody tell me. They got me certified. They also make us, uh, uh, uh. I don't know. Are you discovering it too? This is, I heard all our voting machines, used machines from California. Yeah. Eight hundred of them. They like to somebody tell me. They got me certified. They also make us, uh, uh, uh. I don't know. Are you discovering it too? This is, I heard all our voting machines, used machines from California. Yeah. Eight hundred of them. They like to somebody tell me. They got me certified. They also make us, uh, uh, uh. I don't know. Are you discovering it too? This is, I heard all our voting machines, used machines from California. Yeah. Eight hundred of them. They like to somebody tell me. They got me certified. They also make us, uh, uh, uh. I don't know. Are you discovering it too? This is, I heard all our voting machines, used machines from California. Yeah. Eight hundred of them. They like to somebody tell me. They got me certified. They also make us, uh, uh, uh. I don't know. Are you discovering it too? This is, I heard all our voting machines, used machines from California. Yeah. Eight hundred of them. They like to somebody tell me. They got me certified. They also make us, uh, uh, uh. I don't know. Are you discovering it too? This is, I heard all our voting machines, used machines from California. Yeah. Eight hundred of them. They like to somebody tell me. They got me certified. They also make us, uh, uh, uh. I don't know. Are you discovering it too? This is, I heard all our voting machines, used machines from California. Yeah. Eight hundred of them. They like to somebody tell me. They got me certified. They also make us, uh, uh, uh. I don't know. Are you discovering it too? This is, I heard all our voting machines, used machines from California. Yeah. Eight hundred of them. They like to somebody tell me. They got me certified. They also make us, uh, uh, uh. I don't know. Are you discovering it too? This is, I heard all our voting machines, used machines from California. Yeah. Eight hundred of them. They like to somebody tell me. They got me certified. They also make us, uh, uh, uh. I don't know. Are you discovering it too? This is, I heard all our voting machines, used machines from California. Yeah. Eight hundred of them. They like to somebody tell me. They got me certified. They also make us, uh, uh, uh. I don't know. Are you discovering it too? This is, I heard all our voting machines, used machines from California. Yeah. Eight hundred of them. They like to somebody tell me. They got me certified. They also make us, uh, uh, uh. I don't know. Are you discovering it too? This is, I heard all our voting machines, used machines from California. Yeah. Eight hundred of them. They like to somebody tell me. They got me certified. They also make us, uh, uh, uh. I don't know. Are you discovering it too? This is, I heard all our voting machines, used machines from California. Yeah. Eight hundred of them. They like to somebody tell me. They got me certified. They also make us, uh, uh, uh. I don't know. Are you discovering it too? This is, I heard all our voting machines, used machines from California. Yeah. Eight hundred of them. They like to somebody tell me. They got me certified. They also make us, uh, uh, uh. I don't know. Are you discovering it too? This is, I heard all our voting machines, used machines from California. Yeah. Eight hundred of them. They like to somebody tell me. They got me certified. They also make us, uh, uh, uh. I don't know. Are you discovering it too? This is, I heard all our voting machines, used machines from California. Yeah. Eight hundred of them. They like to somebody tell me. They got me certified. They also make us, uh, uh, uh. I don't know. Are you discovering it too? This is, I heard all our voting machines, used machines from California. Yeah. Eight hundred of them. They like to somebody tell me. They got me certified. They also make us, uh, uh, uh. I don't know. Are you discovering it too? This is, I heard all our voting machines, used machines from California. Yeah. Eight hundred of them. They like to somebody tell me. They got me certified. They also make us, uh, uh, uh. I don't know. Are you discovering it too? This is, I heard all our voting machines, used machines from California. Yeah. Eight hundred of them. They like to somebody tell me. They got me certified. They also make us, uh, uh, uh. I don't know. Are you discovering it too? This is, I heard all our voting machines, used machines from California. Yeah. Eight hundred of them. They like to somebody tell me. They got me certified. They also make us, uh, uh, uh. I don't know. Are you discovering it too? This is, I heard all our voting machines, used machines from California. Yeah. Eight hundred of them. They like to somebody tell me. They got me certified. They also make us, uh, uh, uh. I don't know. Are you discovering it too? This is, I heard all our voting machines, used machines from California. Yeah. Eight hundred of them. They like to somebody tell me. They got me certified. They also make us, uh, uh, uh. I don't know. Are you discovering it too? This is, I heard all our voting machines, used machines from California. Yeah. Eight hundred of them. They like to somebody tell me. They got me certified. They also make us, uh, uh, uh. I don't know. Are you discovering it too? This is, I heard all our voting machines, used machines from California. Yeah. Eight hundred of them. They like to somebody tell me. They got me certified. They also make us, uh, uh, uh. I don't know. Are you discovering it too? This is, I heard all our voting machines, used machines from California. Yeah. Eight hundred of them. They like to somebody tell me. They got me certified. They also make us, uh, uh, uh. I don't know. Are you discovering it too? This is, I heard all our voting machines, used machines from California. Yeah.[447.11]
We have three large categories. There's 25 members, and only about 10% of our overall membership is from large categories. Top five reasons that folks choose to belong to the Chamber of Commerce is credibility. A big member says that you're committed to your community, your clients are customers, and the future of our region. So a lot of businesses really feel like having that connotation that their members of the Chamber helps them instill confidence in their customers and their clients. The Big Local First Campaign, I'm sure everybody has seen that before, we do, we try our very best to ensure that people are shopping locally. We want people to spend their money here. We don't want them to spend it four miles up the road in Alata. There's a lot of great services and products here within our community. Networking, primary reason why people join the Chamber is to make personal connections. We have over 40 events a year between coffees, ribbon cuttings, and mixers, and lunches, and annual meetings, and so it gives all of our Chamber members and guests an opportunity to get to know one another. Publicity and exposure, direct exposure, exposure to the community through print material, website, and daily visitors to our office. You all have probably seen some of these floating around town with the experience of Gardner, where we provide a direct mail piece promoting a lot of our Chamber members. The green one is the map. We print and distribute 10,000 of those every two years, and we have designated drop-off spots for all of our maps, and so if you need maps, please let us know. The Travel Kansas Guide being located right on I-35, we do some advertising in that for folks to know that we're here. And the bottom right-hand corner is a picture of our office where we have, as I mentioned, a tremendous amount of walk-in traffic and phone calls that come in. Public policy, we focus on policy so our business, our members can focus on their business. We're part of the Legislative Breakfast Series that's hosted throughout Johnson County each year. We host local candidate forums, and we're a collective voice in Gardner and in Zepeda. It's easier for us to be a collective voice with 239 members than have 239 individuals that are all trying to come and express their same concerns. So focusing on the future, what does the future bring? We can no longer simply ask, "What can the Chamber do for our local businesses?" We must begin to ask, "What kind of a community do we want, and how can our businesses help us get there?" We need to better educate our communities that economic development through business activities must occur to ensure personal and community prosperity. And economic development, again, is not just bringing in new business. Economic development is, how do you spend that $5 for a bag of potato chips in Gardner, Kansas, rather than in Alata? Or how do you buy a cup of coffee here, rather than outside of town? All those things constitute economic development. We have to figure out a better way that we can be able to sustain those dollars here in our community. We have to work with our communities to better understand the impact businesses have on quality of life issues, schools, tax base, and employment. We need to identify products and services required to meet the demands and wishes of our residents and visitors. I get phone calls every day from somebody calling up and saying, "Hey, we need a coffee shop. Hey, we need a barbecue restaurant. We need this. We need that." Well, I think those are all great ideas, but until we, as a community, can come together and say, "Hey, this is what we want, and this is what we're willing to support," it doesn't do anybody any justice to go out and track businesses here if we know that they're going to fail. So we have to identify, what are those businesses, what are those entities that we, as a community, want, we're willing to support, and we need to go out and target them and try and recruit them to work in our community. We need to strike a balance and understanding between attracting and retaining both small and large-scale businesses. That's been a big discussion. We don't want any big businesses. We don't want small businesses. Well, we need to be able to strike that balance, because you have to be able to have bulk to be able to sustain a good, a good community. We need to focus on creating new job opportunities within our communities. We need to build consensus within our community that growth is good, change is unavoidable, and that our region will continue to be a premier destination for families and businesses to coexist. I think that's very important. We have that opportunity to do that, and we need to be able to capitalize it. Lastly, I want to leave you with a great quote from our good friend, Mr. Sir Winston Churchill. Says, "Some see private enterprise as a predatory target to be shot, others as a sacred cow to be milked, but fewer of those who see it as a sturdy horse pulling the wagon." Whether it be the United States, the state of Kansas, or Gardner, it's the private enterprises, the small businesses that are the ones that are driving force behind our economy, and we have to do all that we can to ensure that they stay in business and they continue to hire people so that everybody benefits. Thank you. If you have any answers or questions.
I have one. You talked about the legislative agenda. How do you solicit feedback from businesses as to what can work and where the Chambers be in those forums?
That's great. On the forums of the Legislative Agenda-
Just the legislative? In that title?
It really starts with the President's Council in Johnson County. There's nine chambers in Johnson County. We all get to go, and we try to identify common agenda items. As you can imagine, it's hard to be able to get nine different communities or nine different chambers to all agree, but we have kind of a base platform that we use. And then from there, then we each take that back to our own communities. We can talk with business leaders, we can talk with other folks about what they like but they don't like about those categories or others, and then we feel to craft, bring before our Board of Directors where our legislative agenda is.
Is that legislative agenda for state level or for-
It's both. It can be for the local level, it can also be for the state level.
Can you give us like a top five list of things that they want to see happen in the cities, in the seven, or was it nine, nine cities, nine chambers?
Yeah, generally, there's a common theme between jobs, job creation, education, transportation, workforce issues, E-certify, and those types of things. And then there's, I'll be honest, I'm drawing from the last one, but they're kind of big themed areas. We talk about those, what's going to be best for Johnson County, for the state, and then we can take it down and bring it back to our own communities.
So last meeting, we heard from Tom Reader at Southwest Johnson County. Can you talk a little bit about how the two organizations work together and where you see the differences?
Certainly. Yeah, Tom and I, we have a fantastic relationship. We enjoy a great partnership between the Chamber and the EDC. As I mentioned earlier, historically, a lot of times you'll find the EDC is part of the Chamber. In our community, they chose to be able to have this separate. So a lot of the common things that the EDC and the Chamber work on is obviously promoting our community, you know, trying to do what we can to attract new businesses. The difference really is, is that Tom and his organization, their mission is really to be able to go out and attract, you know, businesses that they can be able to, you know, find locations for, be able to build intermodal, large-scale different activities. Whereas the Chamber, you know, we primarily work on existing businesses, we primarily work on educating our community, supporting the local businesses. You know, we work on a small scale of the businesses, like you said, in terms of trying to be able to find locations, retaining businesses, helping them promote themselves. So I guess if you look at it in a traditional standpoint, they're the one that kind of brings a community or a business into town, and then they've got to hand the ball out to us, and we do all that we can to make sure that they're able to, you know, sustain and keep their doors open and help them promote the businesses.
You mentioned earlier about people come in all the time, they've got ideas about coffee shops, barbecue restaurants, and handle life. Sometimes, I'm sure, these are good ideas. What does the Chamber do to help further those ideas along or to get buy-in from, you know, the business community and the community at large for attracting the kind of businesses that the residents here want?
That's a very good question. That's probably one of the biggest challenges we have. You know, it's trying to be able to identify, you take one person's idea, and how do you figure out if that's what, you know, from your chairs, is that something that matters in our community? Is that something that, you know, we want to be able to throw our weight behind and be able to support? You know, some ideas are coming to our office or a little off the reservation, so we know that those probably aren't going to gain a lot of traction. But others, you know, I think are very valid, and, you know, I think that's one of the challenges, is how do we do a better job of working together to be able to identify what do we want as a community, what do our communities look like? And to be able to take those ideas, you know, charge the people that bring up those ideas to go out and spread the word, see if they can be able to gain some traction on their idea and work with us, you know, to be able to find out if it's something we can make work. But it's a very good question.
Steve, thanks for coming and talking to us, first of all. With small business being, what, 60-plus percent of your total of, what, 239 members? Can you give me your most recent success in supporting local small business? Not finding a business, but supporting, you know, Sam across the street, or, you know, the lead down at the coffee shop.
You know, that's a really good question, because I don't know how we can be able to define what success is.
Do you define it?
You know, I define it as being able to do whatever we can and be a resource for whatever needs they might have. An example's going to be, we have two ribbon cuttings coming up this weekend. We have one for quality service, it's a brand-new business in the town. You know, that's something that we can be able to go out and offer to them, to be able to gain some exposure, and we're working out the details today. The other one is the New Baptist Church that just broke around and opened. They're having a dedication ceremony Sunday night. To me, from my standpoint, success is everyone, you know, every ribbon cutting we have means we're getting new business here, we're being able to gain exposure, we're helping them to be able to get foot traffic through their doors, and hopefully be able to help them out. You know, it pains me every time I see a business have to close their doors, obviously I kind of take that personally, but I'm also realist enough to know that, you know, the Chamber can only do so many things. There comes a point where, you know, we can't be able to step in, but to know that we have some small part in being able to help them keep their doors open, you know, using Sam across the street or other downtown businesses, knowing that, you know, knowing that they're doing well during a very tough economy, knowing that we have some small part in being able to help them, to me, is success.
Thanks.
A quick follow-up to that. You mentioned Quick Service is going to have a ribbon cutting, they shortened, and I know they were previously in business in Alata. Is there anything that the Chamber or the EDC did to help lure them to Gardner?
That I don't know. I think primarily in their situation, they found a great location that they were able to purchase. They were, you know, historically working out of a residence, and so they needed to be able to expand it against six or seven employees. And I think, you know, they liked Gardner, this is the market that they wanted to be in, and so they were very excited in trying to find locations here. But they were able to find a location, and fortunately, we were one of the first phone calls that said, "Hey, we want to be a member of the Chamber. We want to be able to get our name out, what we do to, you know, to keep off our business," and that's how we're able to help them.
I have just one last question. So each year, we budget and allocate money for the Chamber. How, and maybe this is more a question for Mary, I don't know, but how, how can we determine the value of that money? So for instance, if your main objective is to support existing businesses, what would you already have available, or what would you suggest that we do to say this $20,000, $25,000 that we're providing each year is really a benefit to the city as a whole?
You know, that's a, I mean, that's a great question. I think it was back to, I think what Randy's question was, is how do you quantify exactly what is success? You know, going through that list of different things that we go through, we're doing different events, you know, multiple events each week. I think we have the advantage of being very visible. I think everybody kind of sees and hears what the Chamber does, and knows that we're heavily involved, and we're doing different activities. You know, the funds that we get from the city are from the transient guest tax, the Economic Development Fund, and so those are really kind of allocated just for, you know, tourism and promotion. I think that's one of the things that we do very well. You know, we do all of our events, obviously, we're doing our best to be able to promote, you know, be able to promote Gardner. So I think you're going to see a little bit of that at every one of our events. You know, with our involvement in the Festival on the Trails, the Johnson County Fair Parade is a great example. We're bringing in 10,000 people to line Main Street just for that one event. So I think it'd be very hard to break down and say, "How do you allocate a dollar amount to each one of our events?" But hopefully, you all hear about all the different events that we're having and the different activities that are taking place, and realize that, you know, without the city's support, we would not be in a position to be able to successfully implement those programs or be able to sustain those programs.
Steve, the membership dues, I assume, are based on size of the organization, is that right?
Correct.
And so what is the largest company that's-
Historically, we've had a large company, and a small company, and then we've had varying ranges in between. This year, we actually changed and implemented a more of a static approach, where there's $2 amounts, there's $300 for small businesses, and there's $700 for large businesses. So those are just, from administrative standpoint, from a legislative standpoint, it's pretty hard to go through with 11 different categories of amounts, and so we were able to streamline that process. So we're looking at 300, 700.
So the small business fee is based on what number?
50 and below, 50 employees below. We did a lot of research on those 11 categories, where our number of employees or number of Chamber members spell. And so, so based on that data, we were able to determine that 50 members and below constitute small, and 51 of the above.
Okay. Will we have a contract then with you? I know, as far as the EDC goes, we didn't have a signed contract, but for last year, we have that?
We do not. My understanding in the past has been since we are funded out of the transient guest tax, and the committee gets together to be able to determine those allocations. We worked with Stuart in the past, and Mike previously, before working with Cheryl this year, to be able to figure out what those, what those needs are. So we do not have a contract just based on that committee's recommendation of allocation of transient locations.
Is there any description of what we, what you provide, maybe as far as, I mean-
There has been a description, you know, I presented in the past, the list of all the different activities that we're involved with. As you all probably are aware, there's requirements with how those transient guest tax dollars actually spend, and so we make sure that we're, you know, that we're fulfilling those requirements, you know, based on the information that we're experiencing.
But this, this year, I think we're taking it out of general, I think we're not, we're not using-
No, not for the Chamber.
One of the more moving-
EDC, that's my understanding, really. Well, thank you all for the opportunity. I know I probably took more time than everybody behind me wanted, but I appreciate the opportunity to be here, and if you have any answer or questions, you don't mind having.
Thank you. Very soon.
The next agenda item is recognizing two employees who participated in the snowplow event expo. So is it printed in the paper?
All right. All right, I'll just speak from here with Eric. First week of October every year, the Metro Chapter of the American Public Works Association has a snowplow and equipment expo. And part of that is training, gives area public works employees the opportunity to come and demonstrate their aptitude in training and equipment, truck operation, safety training. This year, we had five of our employees with operations take a commercial driver's license lash and load training on how to safely load your vehicle. One of our new maintenance, line maintenance workers received flagging training. We had four employees do go to, participate in the snowplow event, which provides a good preseason training for the operation of snowplows they didn't place. We had two employees, Eric being one, Eric placed second out of 60 in the skid steer loader competition. I don't know if you want to describe some of the things you went through to gain that, Eric?
Actually, you have to take a test. Most people take a driver's test every four to six years. Every year you go to this, you have to take the test. That counts to your score. Then you're put through a real-world obstacle course, loading a truck, loading behind a wall where you can't see without knocking things over, and stuff like that. And you have a time limit to not go too fast, but not go too slow. That's what it was.
Eric brought up a trophy with that. Jason Chappelle, also a, he's a worker with operations, placed seventh out of 50 in the backup competition. Is that the one where they have to try and lift eggs with a spoon?
No, they don't do that anymore.
I think there's an alternate competition. We just wanted to recognize Eric and Jason. Eric was able to make it, and congratulate him for good work.
Thank you, David.
We now have a proclamation for World Town Planning Day, and Amy, City Planner, is going to take part in this. Whereas November 8th of each year has been celebrated as World Town Planning Day in many countries since its inception in 1949, and whereas Kansas municipalities, counties, and regional planning entities continually face changes in our communities, and whereas community planning can help manage this change in a way that provides better choices for how people work and live, and provides an opportunity for all residents to be meaningfully involved in making choices that determine the future of our community, and whereas the full benefit of planning requires public officials and citizens who understand and support and demand excellence in planning and plan implementation, and whereas the American Planning Association and the American Institute of Certified Planners endorse World Town Planning Day as an opportunity to highlight the contributions that planning makes to the quality of our settlements and environment, and whereas the celebration of World Town Planning Day gives us the opportunity to publicly, publicly recognize the participation and dedication of the members of the Gardner Planning Commission, Gardner Board of Numbing and Fields, and other citizen planners who have contributed their time and expertise to the improvement of the city of Gardner. Now therefore, be ever involved, on behalf of Mayor David C. Drevetta of the City of Gardner, Kansas, we do hereby proclaim Thursday, November 8th, as World Town Planning Day in the City of Gardner, Kansas.
I thank you for respecting the work of planning in Gardner, and look forward to all the things we're going to do the next year.
Great, thank you. At this time, we do have time allotted on the agenda for public comments, where members of the public are welcome to use this time to make comments about city matters or items on the agenda that are not part of a public hearing.
I have one, I'm happy to, I almost already have one anyway. I spoke here last month, and I really want to thank the council for the letter that I received from them. And we're still not getting any help from Santa Fe or Intermodal. We're still getting the loud whistles, 1, 2, 3 o'clock in the morning. And I'd like for the city to keep going on this and not just let it go. I understand that they're already, you're going to study, or talking about going to study on the entrance to Popper Street in the cemetery there. I talked to Shirley, and she said something about they were wanting to redo the whole intersection there, cemetery, I mean, right at the entrance. And I don't know if we, they need to spend that kind of money to widen that street, put an island down through it, and make the thing bigger and all that. It's been sufficient for years. I think it's just kind of, might be a little waste of time and money. Just go ahead and spend it. The crushing arms of the Dingerbills are there. Only thing we're missing is the horn top ball. Thank you.
Mr. Corndell, may I have your address, please? Your address?
216, I don't know. Thank you.
Okay, well, now, move to the consent agenda. We are going to remove item number three from the consent agenda, and it will be brought up on that December 3 meeting. There needs to be more discussion with the Gardner Airport Board for that. Is there any other item that a customer will actually recommend to the consent agenda? Do we have a motion to approve?
I move we approve the consent agenda. Second.
Motion, Maro, second, for worse sake? All those in papers?
Aye.
Approve. Okay. New business item number one, when you're passing an ordinance adopting the standard traffic ordinance for Kansas City's edition of 2012.
Well, every year, I come up to tell you that when the council finishes their session, their changes that they made are incorporated by the League of Kansas Municipalities into new publications for standard traffic ordinance and Uniform Public Office Code. And this first item is for the standard traffic ordinance, and Gardner routinely adds provisions specific to Gardner for careless driving, vehicle island, apt hour, parking vehicles, the things that I listed here on the memo. This is routine. We take what they, what the League of Kansas has printed, add our stuff, change it to reflect 2012 edition, and there was some minor housekeeping changes to change the Public Safety Department to Police Department app. Other than that, there are no changes, other than the routine stuff that we do every year to this particular standard of ordinance.
Any questions? Which ordinance? 2414. Is there a motion?
I move that we pass ordinance number 2414, adopting the standard traffic ordinance for Kansas City, edition of 2012, with additions and amendments as written. Second.
Motion, Freeman, second, Maro, Freeman?
Yes.
Maro?
Yes.
For worse sake?
Yes.
For it?
Yes.
There is some doubt. Motion passed. New business item number two, consider passing an ordinance adopting the Uniform Public Office Code for City, for Kansas City's edition of 2012.
As stated earlier, this is the same sort of idea, except that this is regarding the Uniform Public Office Code. The league finishes their work, publishes the publication, and then we add things specific to every year, and we also take out a section every year that states far more intentions are illegal, if they're okay here. And other than that, and the minor housekeeping changes to reflect the 2012 edition, and the words from the Department of Public Safety to Police Department wherever that was found, we did, City Attorney Hubbard, Captain Moore, in conjunction with the Minister of the President League, did make a clarifying change regarding the carrying of weapons, even though we all believe ours wasn't compliant. They did wish to make a clarifying change, and that was noted in your Council on绿色 Green Act. And we took the words "carrying" or out of the title of carrying a brandishing weapon and included a new paragraph D. And I, the changes that were recommended, they were reviewed by City Attorney Hubbard, Captain Moore, the judge, prosecutor for the city.
Question?
Could you give us some history on the, on why we had to add the, I mean, I read the email from a group, Godwrits group, but I'm not really sure I understand what inspired it, how this fits, whatever we were doing wrong.
Well, what it all, where it all started, hello, was actually Wichita. And Wichita's ordinance was actually in violation where they prohibited open carry. That's why they had to change theirs, and that kind of got the ball rolling across the state of Kansas, and this group that showed up to see the letter from. Basically, they just, every city in the state of Kansas checked their ordinances. We received one, and after reading ours, our technically was not violation. But with the Attorney General's opinion that came out on what was allowed for open carry, that's when we decided to take the carrying, you know, which was confusing to some people, which is not against the law to openly carry. So we took that off of it and just said "brandishing weapon," and clarified what the brandishing, or what the open carry is, and how you have to carry, if you do carry one open.
But as far as D goes, I, you know, I read it several times, and I still don't understand, is it permissible?
Yes.
Or not permissible?
It is permissible to open carry in Kansas, as long as it's in a secured holster.
And that is, that is Kansas statute. There is nothing we can, we cannot organize out of this. But really, we just have to oblige by Kansas statute.
That is correct.
Then if we don't have to, I mean, if it's Kansas law, why do we have to address it all, address it at all?
That's just some of the other cities around the state are doing, to just clarify it, so that when we get, you know, the letters from the group that we did, and we basically addressed that, and it says, "Okay, here specifically is what the Attorney General said, the statute requires, if you're going to," like Wichita, when they banned theirs, they had the wording incorrectly on theirs, so we basically clarified ours and said, "It's not against the law to open carry, but if you do, this is what it has to be done." So it kind of covers us when we hear responding calls, say, "Hey, someone's carrying a gun on Main Street," and we know, we know specifically what it is they have to do to carry it.
Even so, when I read D, it doesn't, it's not in complete sense, it doesn't appear to me, so I, I mean, it seems like it's going somewhere, and then it just stops. So is there some way that we could say that these actions are, in fact, legal? Because when I read it, I mean, you know, since there are all these subsections, I assume, by, or paragraphs, A, B, C, and D, you know, it starts off by saying it's unlawful, and then exemptions, I mean, it seems like, just, you know, syntax-wise, it's not a clear description of what is allowed. Because, I mean, just read it, carrying on one's person, and then it says all those conditions, unless the firearm is carried in a holster with the safety in place, and such a weapon, and such weapon remains in immediate control of the person at all times, like, you know, should, is legal, or is permissible, or something, it's just difficult to read.
Well, I think this is the same wording Wichita and Oklahoma, and other cities have adopted, and I think word for word, of our authority and the same way that the other cities are using. The, to answer your earlier question, the reason the city has an ordinance, the one thing-
thing we can control is the manner in which the gun is carried. So by having our own ordinance and indicating it has to be in a holster with the safety on it, it has the safety, that's something in addition to the state law, so we get a little something extra. But that's as far as the attorney general's opinion will let us go and that's what Wichita, Little Park, and the other cities all, you know, examined the opinions and decided this is the best we can do. But tell the laws, James.
How long has that all been on the books that way that, I guess, I don't see a lot of people wearing holsters around town when they're in uniform, but I'm, you know, just curious, but how long has that been going on?
But I don't know when this law got passed, but the Second Amendment folks and the National Rifle Association have promoted this across the country. And Kansas has gone along with it, along with most of the states, and I think this has gone along with it too.
But for instance, here it would be illegal because we have a sign that wants to make extra.
That's correct. You can control private property by putting a sign up.
Yeah. I mean, this is the public, this is our.
And I think it also indicates.
It applies to government buildings.
Government buildings, including.
And again.
Including the sign up on the door.
That's a separate, that's a statute.
And any private business can put a sign up on their door.
And in those cases, you can't carry anything in, is that right?
That's correct.
So, but if I go to Veterans Park, see a bunch of people walking around with guns and holsters, that's totally legal?
Yes.
Can we put a sign up there at least so we don't, I mean, I mean, why not?
And while on property open to the public. It's property open to the public.
But why can we exclude guns in here but not other public places?
We just have to live with the state law.
Because it's specifically states in there, the government buildings are covered under where you will not carry openly or illegally.
I mean, I think in answer to Larry's question, there is a bill coming up that in February may very well change that and allow carrying in public buildings.
Oh, that's great.
Yeah, so I mean, that is something that is being discussed and could very well happen.
Let me explain that the law's been in place for a long time and when you pass your ordinances, what it allows you to do is to control the manner in which it's carried. So as long as, you know, we, we tell them that you, it's obviously that you can carry it open, but here's the manner in which you carry it, so if they're not carrying it in that manner, they're in violation of it and we need to actually.
Could we say to ask to be unloaded? I mean, that's a banner.
No, see, that's, that's the specific wording, the statute is loaded.
With a safe.
With a safe down.
If you go on the street.
If I might, please, a moment to clarify something. The question that came up was being, being inserted into our ordinance without clarity and not knowing what it refers to. If you look at the section from the Wichita ordinance that it came from, there is a lien in there that talks about unlawful use of a weapon is knowingly, so there is a sentence that needs to be inserted if we're going to adopt this ordinance tonight so that we have clarity on what you're asking for.
So how would that read then?
It would say unlawful use of a weapon is knowingly carrying on one own person. That makes it a complete sentence.
Okay.
And that's the way it should be in Wichita.
So unlawful use to be all these things.
Unlawful use of a weapon.
Unless it's in a holster with the safety in place.
Is that the same as our brand machine?
A portion of the sentence got inserted without the complete sentence being inserted.
Okay.
In Wichita.
Okay.
So if we're going to adopt it, if we need to read this into the record so that the ordinance has that clarification.
Now, now I'm trying to compute, unlawful use of a weapon is in carrying on one's person in the, shouldn't it be law?
Unless, that's the part that changes it.
All right, got it.
But is there, is there any other ways we could tweak it though to, to, I mean, maybe we could say a gun without a firing tent, for instance, would that be a creative way of, I mean, there's got to be some control that cities should have.
Wichita's looked at this, Oklahoma Parks looked at it, everybody else looked at it. We've all read the attorney general's opinions, we've read the opinion from the league municipalities. Right now, this is, this is basically the best we could do here, all the cities. If they were something better, I'm sure they'd be doing it too.
What would you do if you had somebody in Kansas changed the statute?
Coverable. I mean.
Would you?
Write to your legislator.
You know, actually, Captain Moore, how often do you guys have to enforce the, the previous code? How often do you have to?
When you say previous code, what are you referring to? You don't want to carry?
The code that currently runs, yeah, for carrying or brandishing a weapon.
Brandishing, there's quite a bit of that. As far as openly carrying, thirty years I've been here, I can probably tell you once or twice I've dealt with somebody actually carrying openly on their person. This is even Wichita said, with the changes they've had, they've not had any issues or any people doing it. This, you know, it's the groups, there's a board that's acting on them and what's pushing this.
So then maybe rather than waiting on a legislator to change it, why don't we put it in our legislative agenda? We did, you know, we, we had some pretty positive feedback on our, on our agenda item which allowed, or tries to allow banks, our cities to be able to use whatever bank state, whichever bank state they want to use. I mean, it's not, it's not right yet, but certainly that was a good first start, so maybe we should be the leaders on this, on this item and, and put it in the legislative agenda if everybody's agreeable to that.
And I think we, we'll be talking about our legislative agenda if we have any more questions. Do we have a question? Okay, do we have a motion for ordinance number twenty four fifteen?
I move we pass ordinance number two four one five, accepting the Uniform Public Affairs Code for Kansas City edition two thousand and twelve with additions, changes and amendments as written. Second.
Motion Maro, second, Berborsik. Maro?
Yes.
Berborsik?
Yes.
Freeman?
Yes.
Verbit?
Uh, no.
Harrison, yes. Motion? Carry. New business item number three, consider passing an ordinance for Chapter nine dot ten, fire apparatus and equipment of the garden municipal.
City, as we discussed with council, maybe we have found some items that we need to do some cleanup on in regards to the Department of Public Safety and Fire Services after the change to District One. In Chapter nine dot one oh, it all addresses fire apparatus and equipment. That entire section needs to be repealed. It will no longer be part of our code. A couple items that we did verify as well as the rideaway apparatus and obstruction of fire hydrants, we were concerned about that, both handled in the International Fire Code, so we recovered. So repealing this chapter, we clean up, that is here top of our code.
Questions? Do we have a motion for ordinance number twenty four one six?
I move that we pass ordinance number twenty four one six, repealing Chapter nine point one oh of the Garden Municipal Code. Second.
Motion Freeman, second, Maro. Freeman?
Yes.
Maro?
Yes.
Berborsik?
Yes.
Verbit?
Yes.
Harrison, yes. Motion carries. Thank you. New business item number four, consider operating the city administrator to execute contracts of holiday contracting ink for construction of the hundred and fifty ninth Street Garbrail Upgrade Project in an amount not sixty, ninety one thousand, eighty thousand three four dollars and eighty cents.
Show you where this is, some photos. Photos probably entails, there's a culvert located on the map, it's located on the Kilpatrick Tributary just east of the Kilpatrick Wastewater Treatment Plant. Hundred fifty ninth Street is shown in yellow, Waverly is shown in green, and then Kilpatrick Road is shown in kind of orange. You can see, excuse me, Celebration Park is planted. In summer two thousand and eleven, the county overweighed the road and participated in that cost about fifty five thousand dollars. The culvert located at this crossing was built in about nineteen sixty six. It has about fifty feet of culvert, guardrail on each side. Guardrail, current standards require the top of the guardrail to be about two point seven feet above the surface of the road. This is probably foot to foot to half. Also, guardrail standards on entry and exit have changed to upgrade this to the current standards as a safety item. We are, as this project designed, installed approximately two hundred and sixty feet of guardrail on each side. One of the main costs of this project is grading, which is required to wipe shoulder out to receive the flare and the in sections for the guardrail. The project was designed, let me get some more photos first, this shows the north side looking west, you can see how low it is, and you see it's a very short section of guardrail with in shoes, and then on the south side, you can see the plant on the left, same kind of photograph. The project was designed, we hired our bridge inspector to do the work, Lockner, took bids for it in August, however, we received no bids. We went back and polled the vendors and said, what's, what's wrong? And they said, well, it's a guardrail project and there aren't, you know, a bid. So we went back, repackaged, called them again, said, look, there's about, you know, a thousand yards of grading, guardrail, we need to get a subcontract if you're guarding on all probability, but it's not just a guardrail installation project, but it is a grading, seeding, and guardrail installation. Rebid it, received four bids, a low bid was submitted by holiday contract in the amount of ninety one thousand three hundred and twenty four. The estimate was seventy three thousand two forty four. The difference between the estimate, and this kind of runs throughout all the bids you see, was in the grading cost. In the estimate, the grading work was about eleven thousand dollars, the low bidder, grading was about thirty three thousand dollars, which kind of follows through. So because of the very small quantities, the fact what you have to do to widen the shoulders is get it, bench the existing roadway and slowly build it up to, to allow the installation of new, our current standard approaches. The project funded from the Special Highway Fund. We originally budgeted, we're carrying ninety thousand in the highway fund for the entire project, which included eighteen thousand for easement acquisition. All our easements were donated. With this award, based on our other project, our design and survey costs, the total project cost will be about a hundred and six thousand dollars. So there is an increase of about sixteen thousand dollars over budget. The Special Highway Fund does have the capacity to carry this. The project is necessary from a safety standpoint because of this guardrail is, is a hazard for both its work and awarded. Contract will begin work on next Monday, has two weeks to do the work, but permitting a meet up for Thanksgiving. I think we have to answer your questions.
Tim, I'm, I have a question in your direction. With the way it stands right now, the city would probably be open to engage if there were an access there because it doesn't meet the standards?
Well, it, well, you, if it met the standard when it was built, if there was a standard, and then, and a standard is later upgraded, a lot of the existing, you know, is, you can live with it. Now, if there's an accident, obviously the claim's going to be it wasn't, it didn't up to the current standard, but our defense would be, well, it wasn't built under the current standard, it was built, you know, sometime, you know, in the past. But, you know, once you begin to address it like we are this evening, and indicating it is a hazard.
You recognize that.
Then you, you pretty much need to proceed and fix the problem.
And what you do find on this type of situation, roads are built up over the years, guardrail lowers, the other problem too is the in treatments, that's the subject of, lots of engineering time has been spent over the last thirty years trying to figure out the best way to build in treatments for guardrails. So, you know, our recommendations is proceed as a fairly low-cost improvement that would be the needs of the project.
David, based on this example, and I recall this a country road, it was probably a gravel road ten, fifteen years ago?
No, it was a gravel road until about five years ago.
Okay, then. With that being said, though, what kind of projects would we see on the horizon with the overlays and so forth that would apply to other roads similar to this?
You would.
You mean, especially with roads perhaps moving west or northwest, I mean, what does that look like for us?
Most of the roads that, in our immediate horizon, we don't have this type of structure on them.
Sure.
So, you know, it's more of the culvert. But, you know, anytime you would encounter a, you know, an older culvert on a road, if you upgrade it, you're either going to have to extend it or modify as your traffic builds on it, then you're going to have to look at different guardrail standards to apply because it's based on speed and.
Sure. So we're going to anticipate more of them to come, generally speaking?
Yeah, as we expand out into, we have another one we're looking at on the hundred and sixty seventh street. Wasn't installed too long ago, but still with the volume, we're looking at the clear distance.
Clear issues.
It's not as much of an issue as this, but this one causes us quite a concern.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Or motions?
I move that we authorize the city administrator to execute contracts with holiday contracting ink for the hundred and fifty ninth Street Garbrail Upgrade Project in an amount not to exceed ninety one thousand eight hundred and twenty four dollars and eighty cents. Second.
Motion Freeman, second, Berborsik. All those in favor? Indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those? Motion carries. Item number five, consider a resolution clearing unnecessary appropriating private property or interest bearing for standardized alarm installation for maintenance stations with big old crazy water treatment, clean and flush project in a certain quality and survey to the need.
I have a location, Matt Corio on this one. This pertains to the garden only part of our agreement with Edgerton. It involves the century sewer, horse mane, and gravity line that would connect to the Edgerton project. A general overview of location, this is not exactly, actually, it's a little bit closer, but the limits of the sewer involved are shown in red. Hundred ninety first street is shown in yellow, Waverly is shown in white. A little more detail on the property owner, this just shows the BNSF property west of Waverly that's to be involved, and then as you work your way along Waverly and then up to the screen, some of the other properties, there's about seven properties that are to be involved. The reason we're asking for the resolution, which is the first step, where we are, the engineers are still finishing their plans, we're still waiting on the descriptions of these, we have an appraiser lined up ready to go as soon as the easement information is presented to them. The next step, considering the loan, we have to follow the Federal Uniform Act, Uniform Property Acquisition and Relocation Act, which requires appraisals. The next step would be for us to come back after the appraisals are completed, as we get authorization to make offers based on appraisals. At that time, because of the very tight timeframe, we would probably ask for approval of condemnation ordinance so that we have it in that we're unable to negotiate. But at this point, all we're asking for is a resolution, step one, by contract, we have to have this completed by July nine. So it's a fairly tight timeframe. By contract, we have to have this completed by July, so it's a fairly tight timeframe. We've been, at least made some contact with the owners, we've written all of them, but don't have the pricing or specifics to negotiate with them yet. But once again, we're missing a tight, tight running timeframe. We need to ask for the resolution, which is only step one.
So Dave, this is the same thing that we just went through with the water line board, right? The same stuff?
That is correct.
Okay.
And just to update you on the light drive, we actually were able to negotiate a settlement with all parties. Condemnation was not filed, we just haven't gotten all the documentation. Would have presumed it to tonight had it all been in. So the next meeting, we should have all the settlement orders here with us. But this is step one, there's two steps, there's another step to go before we... So it's precaution because of timeframe, we ask for approval of this resolution. We'll be coming back to you once the appraisals are done, if we can get them knocked out in time. I can have them back to you as soon as, beginning of December, otherwise it would have to be June.
Any questions? Resolution number eighteen eighty-two? Revolution or resolution thirty-two?
A move with resolution number eighteen eighty-two, a lot of residents who have received preparation and acquisition of descriptions for land that must be acquired for the dig, bolt, creek, treatment, plant project. Second?
Motion Maro, second Freeman. Maro?
Yes.
Freeman?
Yes.
Flotch?
Yes.
For Borstick?
Yes.
Harrison? Yes. Motion Harris. Do this inside of number six, consider authorizing the city administrator to execute change order numbers four, five, and six to the construction contract with NJ Trenching for the BNSF waterline relocation project.
This, this is, yes, earlier, this is, we have viewers' lines crossing the BNSF tracks by our license. As they're modifying the tracks, we have to do it. The work is done except for change order number six. All three of these, four, five, and six, pertain to the way that the road crosses. Four and five, more of the material in the, basically, the conduit of the railroad. We were, our plans and one of our records showed it was PVC, it was actually a different material. So we had to do an extra two, three, two, our PVC pipe and this high-density polyethylene required bringing in a subcontractor to basically weld, give it the work, use the heat process to weld the cup to it. The second one, there's a valve that was shown on the outside of the area to be relocated. Actually, what was it, uncovered, it was actually inside, so basically had to take the valve off and reset it. So it was the extra work of resetting the valve. Finally, the last one is fourteen thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars. We had plans and design, sent it to the BNSF for review, through the review process. They didn't catch the factor of grading's difference and then come back and said, oh, no, you got to lower it, even though we've already done the work. So this is, we have to promise to go back and lower it to the project. All this work is within an area that's a hundred percent reimbursed by the BNSF.
Is there a contract for that, or has that play out?
As far as, I mean...
The reimbursement, I mean?
I think it's under our license, under the, the work that we do within there.
Do you have a contract with?
No.
I decided it would be under our license agreement, where it's very similar to utilities with us, the city. If they're within the right of way, it has to be relocated, it's utility pays if it's not. In this case, they have expanded their right of way over our line, therefore, it's a hundred percent reimbursed.
Any other questions? Good question.
A move that we authorize the city administrator to execute change orders number four, five, and six in the total amount of eighteen thousand, five hundred and ninety dollars and seventy-three cents to the construction contract with NJ Trenching for the BNSF waterline relocation project. Second?
Motion Freeman, second Maro. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion Harris. Staff, anything for council?
No.
Yes?
Well, just a couple of bullet point items of interest perhaps. Our Boobash event recently held in Celebration Park, our sixteenth annual, was a great success despite some chilly weather. I certainly appreciate the help of those of you that were able to make it out there and certainly of all the volunteers. Recreation Supervisor Adrianian Collins, her job is an outstanding job organizing the event, volunteers. I certainly appreciate all her efforts as well. All of our outdoor athletic activities have been completed for the season. We're shifting indoors now for our indoor programs. And finally, I'd just like to mention that Christmas in the Park event will be on Monday, November the twenty-sixth, at Cornerstone Park, where we'll light up about twenty-five thousand Christmas lights.
I'd just like to make a few comments on the railroad horn issue. We did make contact with the representative of the Federal Railway Administration. One of the items that, when they do talk about, there are requirements for blowing horns, and one of, under federal law, if they're blowing forty-five, they have to start blowing their horn at a quarter mile of a, of a crossing, until they cross it. And they have basically got two short shorts, let's say two longs, one short, and one long as they approach, that's what federal law. One of the comments on the, to, it appears that this could be probably a more simple process for quiet zones. However, to meet the requirements for quiet zones, you have to have a certain type of gates. I was thinking, you know, when we had the fellow that helped us with Boon Light looking at it, I was thinking, well, jeez, it's narrow. We got the two gates, can't, won't that count? Well, apparently it's won't because what happens if a gate drops and some guy gets trapped in the middle? So therefore, you have to have, if you're just going to have, not have a island, you have to have quad gates. So therefore, the first one drops and the second one is delayed to allow people to escape. In order to make that, though it may appear silly, the requirement is you either need to have quad gates or you need to have a median to build single gates instead of a wall. So you'll have to widen it out, you'll have to put a median. But we're investigating that, seeing how that could go. But I don't have a full report, we are looking into what can be done. We don't have a full answer as to why are all the horns sounding? But we are continuing to ask and make contacts with both the Federal Railway Administration and BNSF.
So is the, I mean, is the catalyst for why these people are complaining? That there's more traffic or somebody's not doing something correctly? I mean, I never really understood why we're getting more and more, and, and traffic, I think, is, I would guess, is pretty steady over the years, even?
Well, I think, I think the difference kind of when this first came up was the fact that originally, you only had one set of tracks at that location. And now the, the old south track, southern track, used to be one direction, and then the north track was another direction. Now, all through traffic has been double tracked. So you have both directions at that location. So even though it's maybe the same number of trades, you've got horns, or train sound horns going both directions, more than the same. So I think that would be a change.
Yeah, I think from their perspective, and when you're out there, it seems like to them, there's double the traffic. And it may not physically be double, but for some reason, because of some of those changes that were implemented, it seems like they're hearing them more frequently.
Well, they're hearing them in a concentrated area, whereas before they were split.
Right, right.
So they're, so the people that are nearest that north track now have double.
Exactly.
The distance is much closer.
Some of the trains, some of the trains that were coming in on the south side of the cemetery are down north of the cemetery.
Right.
So that, that is a definite change.
But, and I've visited some of the residents, and I think that beyond just the increase in traffic is that the, the way that the horns are, are being sounded doesn't seem to comply with what they were used to having coming through their neighborhood.
That's why I...
Yet they, they think they're blowing the horns excessively.
And we, we asked the question, of course, the answer, the official answer always goes to the kid, is we're following federal law and following whatever requirements. You know, that's, that's where we are today. You know, part of the gentleman's comments about us having made inquiry about what, we've made contact with Mrs. Narsdale about just, you know, what about if we had to go into the cemetery? We're trying to put together some estimates, but that's where we are at the moment.
David, that earlier part of your comment was, has that been communicated to those, that resident group?
About, well, we sent a letter out, basically, it was just last week, it was talking about the requirements for blowing horns. We haven't gone any further. But this is, some of this is just keeping in this state.
Perhaps they actually did talk about the alternative for the median, so obviously that's somehow been communicated somewhere.
Now, I think that was one of my folks talked to, Mrs. Narsdale, was talking about, you know, what if we get that, some of the requirements? And I think that's really general.
Okay.
Now, when we were talking about the quad gates, and I'm just, I'm trying to get this correct. Do we have to have quad gates and a median?
No.
Or is, or is it quad gates or a median with, with dual gates?
Basically, it's either quad gates or a median. If you have a median, then you can get away with your single crossing.
Right.
Like we have at Boon Light, where you've just got, just the incoming side has a gate, the exiting side is not gate.
So if we had, so if we had width in the road to put the median in, then it'd just be the cost of the median? But now we're talking about the additional cost of expanding the road? And that's coming in from the Green Street, I mean, from the Oplar Street side.
Right, you'd have, but you'd have to do the cemetery side to receive too, because you would have to have a median on the cemetery side.
North and south of that intersection?
It'd be just like Boon Light?
Yes, so you basically have a choice of actually, if you could build the structural barrier, I mean, the median, that's... Because the other little nuance of quiet zones is if you do build quad gates, then the municipality's responsible for added upkeep and operation of the second set of gates.
Yeah, so I was just going to ask, what, what are we on the hook for as cities for the railroad?
Should, we would be, or we would have to make improvements, and probably pay for any modifications to the gate. Have, as long as it stayed single, set the gates like you have, then the maintenance and upkeep would be on that. We went to, didn't do the median, went to quad gates, and the quad, added costing of quad gates would be on the cemetery.
But there's no maintenance there, it's maintained by the railroad?
Well, they'll usually be responsible for the upkeep and maintenance and operation of second set of gates too.
Dave, is there any opportunity to make, basically, poplar one-way in entrance into the cemetery and then, and exit out through Grand? Would that save, I mean, would we then still be liable for addressing kind of both sides of the gates, or would that...
I, you know, I can't answer that. I know we've kind of been kicking around what to do on the Grand Street, because there's still a big crossing there.
Right.
So let's say we drop, you know, fifty, sixty, some odd thousand dollars at that location, if we're lucky, we still may have horns on Grand, on the, the Grand Street. So, you know, that's another nuance we don't have an answer to.
Well, and is, do we have any code issues that keep us from closing perhaps, perhaps the Oplar Street entrance? And, and making the entrance coming in on, on Grand Street instead, or vice versa? Closing one and improving the other?
But how would that help the noise factor?
And if you, if you close one of the entrances, then you've only got to make improvements on one side to get the quiet zone.
Because not a crossing, so they don't have to stay on as often as well.
These are all different things, or two. I know one problem you do have on the Grand Street, wherever it is, is still, that provides intermittent access to the cemetery, although it's not used, plus it provides access to a piece of private property, it's only between the tracks. But that's where we are today, I think, some gentlemen here, I just want to mention, it's current status.
Thank you.
Anything from council?
I just wanted to thank Captain Moore and his staff for their duty on Halloween night. I know, I know it went well, but Officer Hudson was on foot as the sun was going down in our neighborhood in Willow Springs, and I've had several neighbors comment on that, how reassuring that was. So I certainly appreciate their extra efforts, I'm sure it was nice to do as well.
We put an extra few people on that night, and we did things a little differently than passed in the past. Got out on foot in several areas in town.
Yeah, Captain, I would agree with you, I live, what, two blocks south of you, and I heard the same comments from my neighbor on hot horns, so we appreciate that.
Thank you.
We carry our weapons in our neighborhood, so we don't require any place protection.
I don't bring any, where you live?
Easy.
You know, I, I've got something that I'd, I'd like to bring up, and, and back in, in March, and I realize I'm beginning to sound like a broken record about this, we, we, the council took action on a four-one vote to move forward with studying how to implement a public utility board, and it's November. And I've been talking with Ms. Harris and me about this, and, and I know that we've got issues coming up that we want to get resolved during a visioning process. But I, I'm wondering, I'm wondering why it's November and nothing's gotten accomplished yet, but that's kind of number one. The council voted to move forward with this. But number two, what's the feeling on the council as to whether or not this is going to, how severely this might impact the, the vision across that side? I don't necessarily see it that way, but I, I'm, I would like to see some, some traction on this. I'd like to see this moving forward. Is there anybody on the council that can, and Larry, I know you both have been doing it before. But is there, is there anybody else that's, that's wanting to, to not move forward on, on doing this? We do have a four-one vote on record.
Can we, Charlotte, can you maybe give your feedback on why, why you think the two, one needs to happen before the other, or, or what have you? Because you're, you're definitely more familiar with visioning than we are, and I know that you have some thoughts around this, so maybe that would be good for everybody to hear.
Thank you for our opportunity to address this, and I did learn in July that you took a vote in March, and nothing happened. So just kind of clarification of, we've had some conversations about it, but it, it came up in March, and it would have been good in April if you had some kind of feedback at that time in terms of what would have occurred. The, the visioning process that we kind of talked about doing, one of the things that's key to visioning is, once you develop a strategic plan or a vision, is looking at allocating your resources. You know, what you, what you do with your budget and your funding, once you have that vision. When you start to move other funding sources out of the city's control, you're kind of moving your resources before you make a determination on where you're going. So I think it's something that the council probably want to have some dialogue on. Do you want to move other resources, your water, wastewater resources, before you determine a vision? Part of that vision will be looking at capital projects. And it's a matter of what the council really wants to move that, move those resources and trust that another board will be implementing capital projects to support your vision, or council wants to be developing capital projects to support that vision.
So, so this is a new thing to us, because back when council decided to go.
You had a vision.
We had a vision, so perhaps it might be good to, uh, re-discuss it, bring it back up, and see how it fits now that we're going through this process. Or, or perhaps put it on hold until we, well, you're saying we really can't do the visioning without building what assets or capital we have that are disposable.
Well, you, you would develop a, you, you, when you give away your water, wastewater, or electric, you know, you give away electric, when you give away water, wastewater after that, and then you develop a plan, let's say you develop a plan that indicates you want to look at growth off of operating on that hundred seventy. You really don't have a control over what you do in terms of water, wastewater, if you move those resources and those assets from this governing body. So it, it would. And your vision may not be the vision of that governing board. Because they, you know, when you adopt that vision, that doesn't mean that the governing board, the public utility board that you care so active to, will be adopting your vision.
So vision aside, Cheryl, the Gardner Energy, they're operating under a, a current ordinance, is that correct?
Yes.
So, so I think, Cheryl, ba- basically, what, what we need to have to consider on is, that the approach is either we all agree, or moving forward with the public utility board, and we need to get that outline within, let's just say, I'm just in the word time frame out here, within the next two or three months. And then we need to move into visioning and say, we're going to do visioning with that now being allocated separately, or we go through visioning and we basically. Put the public utility board on the back burner and say, we're going to re, kind of sketch this out, and, and make decisions, I mean, I, I think that's what I'm hearing.
Can I ask a couple questions, Chris, I had Bill Borner here, and you had David here, and I'm wondering, when it comes to, and Jim's here too, and we've got four water funds, what do we have in unfunded capital improvement projects? For those four water funds? Got an idea?
Is that about water and wastewater?
Yes.
Dollar method of projects?
Yeah, the unfunded capital improvement projects, two thousand twelve or two thousand sixteen.
So could we, could we table this discussion and allow staff to be prepared for such questions? I mean, we both promote, you know, proactive emails, and I think to get your, you know, answers, I think it was, who must be accurate with the information versus on the cup? I'm not saying that we need to, you know, shut you down with the rest of your questions, but I think this particular question we should table and allow staff to, to look at that. Where, where are you going with the question, what is the purpose of it?
If we need the answer, what is the purpose of what you're asking?
Well, my, my feeling is, is that I don't know that this is something that we have to table until April, but I think we need to have a look at the allocation of, of the, the projects that we, we have out there, and see whether or not it's going to benefit to separate the, uh, utility projects from the street and the stormwater parks and rec, uh, public safety, general fund projects.
With that outflow, I mean, where, right?
Well, and then, and if we, if.
Got a spreadsheet to do the thing.
But I think that's what Chris was saying, is if we can do it now, then can we move forward with visioning just operating under the assumption that all that stuff is going to be separate? So without having the organization specifically designed, do we have to hold up the visioning because of that?
And the other, the other thing is, is that, I, I think that the problems with what the board will do as far as providing, uh, moving forward on, on, on services that are going to be required, I would imagine that's a, a function of ordinance writing. The ordinance is correct, crafted correctly, and we've got a business that's moving into, uh, the city, then public utility board can say, oh, well, we're not going to, we're not going, you know, they're coming into town, and we're not going to do that for them now, uh, because that's not in our plans. You know, I, I think that a, a well-crafted ordinance would make allowances so that, you know, that the, the vision would be implemented as well as, uh, you know, operating utilities is using our business process.
One thing I would caution on the council line is, when you talk about what you have in unfunded capital projects, um, you have unfunded capital projects based on a program that doesn't account for long-term economic sustainability. So you really have to look at, are you growing, are you annexing, are you going to have additional non-residential development, so the capital program that you have developed doesn't account for where the city is going, because there is no vision, and there's not a updated comprehensive plan. So you've got improvements based on.
Current.
Current, maybe even status quo, but it doesn't really look at kind of where you expect to be, um, in terms of long-term, and not development opportunities that might present themselves. So we certainly can give you an answer to that, but I just don't want to give you that answer and represent that that gets you where you might need to go. Because we have primarily residential community, and residential doesn't pay its way, even in the Lenoxes and the Leavels, where the residential tax base is substantially beyond our residential tax base.
And speaking of that, I, I mean, I voted for, I was one of the four that voted for it, and I've done a lot of, um, research in the McPherson Utility Board, and I found, and I, I spoke with some, um, some folks out there, and I found that eighty-five percent of that utility board is supported by the commercial side of McPherson, and fifteen percent, um, is supported by the residential piece of it. So if I was interested in numbers, and obviously I have emailed David and Cheryl, I'd be interested in, what does that look like for us? You know, with McPherson being a model, and they're fairly successful. But on the other hand, back to what Cheryl said, I'd be very, and I think Larry would concur, I'd be very interested in, not from a micromanagement perspective, but from a good stewardship's perspective, making sure that this council, years from now, would have the wherewithal, through that ordinance, to manage, if you will, uh, that utility board at the end of the day. I, I'm not confident that, that the example we have through Gardner Energy, that we have that wherewithal, that's just my, my opinion.
Well, and that's, again, that takes me back into ordinance writings that, that, you know, begins with the end in mind, and.
Absolutely.
And gets, and gets to the end.
Yeah, I'm also.
With the right vision.
I'm also, Chris, I, I'm just more interested in, in, I guess, more discovery and, and conversation, uh, and, and allowing city staff to be prepared for that, to, to have that viable conversation.
So, so I guess, I, I mean, I see a couple options, we have a work session coming up, we can add this discussion, or further discussion, in more than further detail, specifically to the public utility board, and how that fits in with visioning, um, I guess, on Tuesday, or whenever that meeting's going to be. So we can do that, um, or we can all agree that from a visioning perspective, we would move forward with visioning, and we would see where that took us relative to the public utility board, and if that brought anything new to light, that would want us to consider changing direction. I mean, that, that's all the options I might, I might open.
I just want to keep it put them together, I mean, is there any reason why we can't talk about, about it, envisioning, and then, I mean?
Well, we did, was something that I had brought up previously in talking with, with Cheryl, was should it be part of visioning? And actually, I mean, if we, if we kind of, uh, if we came to a conclusion that, yes, that's the way that we wanted to go, can we start planning in that concurrently?
So two separate tracks?
Does one, does one, uh, keep the other from happening, if you're, Cheryl, would, would he? In other words, uh, we could put on a work session item, what would be the purpose of, of a work session? Would it be to discuss whether we're going to table it, or, or delay the implementation until the visioning process, is that really kind of where we're going anyway, I guess?
If you put them together, the vision content is in a process. If you put them together, um, I guess the question then for staff would be, is it a foregone conclusion that we already have the answer? Or is it really open for reassessment? Because if you're bringing them together, and we have a foregone conclusion that, yes, we're going to go that way, then that kind of drives visioning. It might be more helpful if we kind of go into visioning where we really want to look and see if that's the direction council wants to go in. And as for, kind of, you all decide, you know, if you want to stick with that, that you're going into visioning where those are resources that we're not going to be utilizing to implement a vision.
So your recommendation is perhaps to envisioning first, and table this decision, or this implementation?
I think the council can decide whether vision, vision is a priority, or whether implementation of whatever action you put in March, and I haven't looked at your March, um, meeting to see kind of what that discussion was, whether or not that's your priority.
I think it's, I think it's relevant to bring up, as an informed conversation, once, you know, I mean, we, we've had this at the end of a meeting where minds have kind of gone a different direction, to find out, uh, because situation has changed pretty drastically since when we talked about this in March, I don't know if the intentions have, but the visioning process itself, the new city administrator, new, uh, community development director, that we helped out in place, and all three of those things, I think, affect that particular role, and we need to have that conversation once again, have a little bit more Cheryl's, um, in fact, the discussion about how she thinks that affects the visioning, because that's something we didn't consider when we talked about it last March. So I think it's a valid conversation, but we need to have it as a prepared conversation, not as, uh, let me ask a question of someone that doesn't have the papers in front of them, and have it as a discussion, and so we all have a chance to get ourselves up to speed a little bit, prepare ourselves for that discussion one more time. And finally, because the way, you know, Larry had a great point, does one operate without the other, or can they both operate at the same time? And I, I, even through the discussions, I have no idea what that answer is yet, and I don't know if anyone's really clear on that, can we go down one road, and is that going to block the next, or vice versa? Is that fair?
I, I think, I think it is mutually exclusive, I think you have to do the visioning and determine at that point whether.
What, your vision?
Well, whether it's still as applicable, because, I mean, as, as I recall, the discussion was really, the catalyst for that discussion was a, sort of a fear of misallocation of capital improvement funds, or half the disallocation of those funds. But now, we see it more as a, as an opportunity, I think, uh, to, to see whether it fits in a more proactive economic development, uh, which, I don't know if that's the right term, but does that make sense to anybody? Christie's like it was reactive before, and now we're, we're proactively looking at, we're, we're making the centerpiece, the vision, and this is merely a.
Piece of that vision.
Yeah, a piece of, of a, a path to whether that, it fits that vision or not.
And Chris, we have been wrong, Christie was on the, the committee, that, uh, uh, we own our own utilities, water, wastewater, electric. These are public benefit organizations, primary. Now, this, this wasn't about necessarily, uh, the misallocation of, of funds, it was, but there is a component about being good stewards of the money that the utilities bring us. The money that the utilities bring us, right, yeah, it can be shifted around to a certain extent, uh, there's not, uh, there's, there's ways that you can move the money, there's ways that you can't move the money. But, uh, at the, at the end of the day, what we're wanting is, is to run these pieces like a business, you've got meters on them. If you've got meters on them, then you, and you charge for them, then they're business, we should run it like a business. The Electric Utility Board has done a, a, a very good job. Now, am I in love with all the ordinance writing that they did to get that established? Not necessarily, uh, but I think that, that maybe it could have been, uh, pieced together a little bit better, yes, probably. But at the end of the day, there have been good results. One of the other things that we, we talked about was the fact that there's only a certain amount of time that council dedicates to individual public utility issues on an ongoing basis, whereas people that are on a, a, a utility board, only utility board, are going to be able to spend more time familiarizing themselves, studying, and, and making better important decisions, and taking the politics out of it. At the end of the day, if it's a, if these are companies for the benefit of the public, then, you know, not only should we be able to keep up with our maintenance, keep up with our expansion, but we ought to be able to keep our, our, our rates steady, and, uh, and with any, with any luck, allow them to continue to be steady going forward. I think that's what we were looking for when we studied for almost three months, and wrote a white paper, and presented it to the council, and got approved for one.
No, I mean, that, that's, that's really it, um, now, now, all kind of weigh, in my opinion, as far as visioning goes, I think that, um, in my opinion, I think we can move forward, we should move forward with visioning, and I think that, um, if the public utility board, uh, which we decided in March, most of us said that was the right direction, then that, through that visioning continues to be the right direction, then it will come to light. I mean, I, I don't, I don't think there's any harm in, because, first of all, Chris, we've got a month and a half, and we're probably not going to set ourselves into a board within a month and a half, so if we're doing visioning during that time, and the public utility board still remains viable as the right option, then it will come to light through that, and we should be then saying, hey, that's our number one action out of this visioning, and we want to get it in place before the twenty, I guess, fourteen budget.
That's what I, I, I would agree with.
So, I mean, if it's the right thing to do, it should be the right thing to do, and, and I think we all agreed in March it was the right thing to do, and in further conversation, and further visioning around that, and if something comes to light that that's not, that we decide, hey, listen, you know what, maybe there's a better way, then we need to pursue the better way.
Well, I, I don't think there's any harm in going through the vision process and, uh, waiting to see where this fits, okay?
I mean, there are.
Do you agree with that, Chris?
Uh, I, I'm okay with that, but if, if this is something that, uh, that we identified early on, is something that we want to do, then I think that it is something we should be working on concurrently, as we do the visioning, instead of waiting, instead of having it in place for budget purposes for twenty fourteen, uh, because we shouldn't let it go another year.
So we're moving forward with visioning?
Well, yeah, we, we don't really have a timeline, then, which is until we finish that process.
Right.
An implementation timeline.
You will be key on our discussion during the vision process, the vision process. Yes.
Okay, here we go. Good questions, Cheryl.
Sure.
This is tomorrow, so you're going to have to follow your paper, keep that in mind.
All right.
Close? Ms. Harris. Don't forget the votes. We have an hour.